Good evening. Welcome to the September 11th meeting of the Bennington Select Board. It is my pleasure to chair this board. My name is Jeanne Jenkins. I'm going to ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Good evening, I'm Gary Corey.
Hi there, I'm Jim Carroll.
Hi, I'm Tom Haley.
Hello, everyone, I'm Jean Conner.
I'm Ed Woods.
Excellent. All right, and also with us tonight, we have our town manager, Stu Hurt. We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes every meeting. We have our communication coordinator, Jonas Spivak, making sure that all the presentations run smoothly. And we have Josh Boucher from CAT TV filming this as always, which we dearly appreciate. This is the 22nd anniversary of the tragedy of 9/11. And I'm going to ask that after we say the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would remain standing for a moment of silence, just to remember those we've lost. Okay? Would you lead us in the pledge?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to define the United States of America, a true republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Next up, Tom, would you read the vision statement that guides our work?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. For the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So do me.
One of -- thanks, okay, all right. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
I need a second.
We have one.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear it, I'm sorry. I just have one, instead of Chloe Harris, it's Glo, G-L-O. And then the other is, I'm thinking that Tom Haley read the vision statement last time, rather than -- oh, okay, all right, okay. Anything else? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstentions? Nope? Okay, super. All right, next up is public comment. Public comment is a time to address, share information about things that are not on the agenda. You have three minutes. We have a time keeper, Ed Woods. And if you would, please, please use your time wisely. All right, so, is there anyone that didn't sign up that would like to be on the, like to speak tonight? No? Okay. All right, so first up is Jack Rossermanly, to talk about refugee resettlement and community café.
Hi, I'm Jack Rossermanly. Thank you very much for the opportunity to give a full presentation and update on refugee resettlement here in Bennington at the last meeting. Just wanted to say that since then, the people who I talked about who were arriving have since arrived and have started getting set up in their new homes. That's seven people since the last meeting. And I also just wanted to mention something that happened literally today, which is that a donation came in, and it came from California, but it came from someone who arrived in Bennington in 1949 as a refugee, and knew about resettlement that was happening here, and wanted to contribute to that effort now. This is someone who has lived a full life all around the United States, but who remembers very fondly the beginning of their journey here and how welcome they felt in Bennington in the late '40s. And that's part of a tradition of support for refugees that extends back quite a ways here in Vermont. The Grace Coolidge, the wife of our former President Calvin Coolidge, was very active in the 1930s in supporting refugee resettlement, and she was in fact born here in Vermont. So even though the work here in Bennington is somewhat new, there are also ways in which it is not that new. So just wanted to share that with everyone, because it was very meaningful to happen this afternoon. So that's sort of where refugee resettlement is. More people are arriving here in Bennington, and we're doing everything we can to get them set up and starting their new lives here, which is really great. For the community café, also lots of good news. We are now serving on average between 50 and 60 meals each week, which is an increase, and that's as more people know about the program, but also as we add more different things to the café. So for example, this coming Saturday, we're expecting our group of musicians who have become fairly regular to be there. So in addition to people coming by for food, we also have people coming by just to play music with each other and sing songs. So anybody who's interested in contributing either by baking, cooking, or volunteering at the café, or if you have other things that you think would be a good fit for a community space for everyone, benningtoncommunitycafe@gmail.com. And I want to specifically shout out to The Apple Barn and Country Bake Shop, who have started contributing food every week to the café, which has been a really wonderful partnership that has started in the last little bit, and is really something we're very grateful for, and we're looking for all kinds of other partnerships within the community as we continue to grow the program, both for the food that we offer and all the other things that we would like to be a part of it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack.
Next up, Mike Bethel, to talk about petition.
Hi, I'm Mike Bethel from Bennington, and I'm here to talk about a petition we have going out. We've got about two weeks to get the signatures of about 500 registered voters of Bennington. The petition is about trying to have a vote on whether or not the senior center building should be conveyed, sold, given to Chris Gilbert as part of the deal for the Ben High project. I feel it's unfair, in a way, that you people didn't announce this after the meeting tonight, but you did it about a week ago, wasn't even mentioned in the select board meeting, but we found out about it, and I'm going to try to get the signatures. This weekend, it will be in the banner, there will be a petition in the banner. So if people would take it, sign it, and get it back to me or Nancy White, directions will be on it, or drop it off in Martin's Mini Mart. You can also sign it at Martin's Mini Mart. We will be getting other people out to get the signatures for the petition. The Dutchman's Café, there, said he'd take a petition, and I'll try to get him out of the places. But the one on the banner, this weekend, if you cite it, it'll be about five, maybe 10 spaces, I don't know how much the ad will allow, you know, how much space it'll have. If you can get it, your friends, your neighbors, your wife, your husband, your whatever, as long as they're registered voters of Bennington or north Bennington. We have to have it in by the end of the month, and I just think it's important to get the people to have a say in this process. So far, I don't think the select board has been very candid about a lot of it. I am not against the Hales doing the project, if that's what they choose to do, but there's no clear answers on this project about how much it's going to cost us a year, how much it's going to cost us to get into it, how clearly the opera money has been used. And I really think the senior building should not just be part of this deal. And the seniors, I think, want to stay there, and I think this will help, you know, persuade you people of what, if we can get it to a vote, is what the people really feel. I'm not guaranteeing we're going to win it if we get a petition signed, but I think it would be nice for the community to be able to have a say.
Mike, you have 30 seconds.
How much?
30 seconds.
Okay. So that's basically it. So it'll be in the paper this weekend, and contact me or Nancy White. My number is 442-9196, 442-9196. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next up is Sam Rustino, to speak on 9/11. And I can't read, I can't, I can't read it, Sam. So 9/11 and something else.
Sam Rustino, Bennington, Vermont. It was notifications of important information from the town of Bennington. Residents need to be notified. I'm very thankful of the acknowledgement of 9/11, the moment of silence. I hope the town of Bennington continues on each year with that, especially when we get to the 25th remembrance of 9/11. I hope something is planned for 2026, like we did in 20, for the 15-year remembrance. Kudos to the Town Highway Department and other people that joined in with the town crews. We had an exuberant storm that came through Thursday into Friday night, and cleanup over the weekend, numerous people with trees down, big trees, and power outages, and I know there's still some people possibly without power, but that got rectified rather quickly. To the Town Highway Department on the east end, with a $200,000 project of a pressure-reducing valve that was installed across the street from the Moose Club. That was done rather quickly and rather professionally by the highway, I mean, the order department. Usually the town meeting is notified, we have a Facebook page, I didn't see it this time. I like to see it, it's where I go, it's a vital source for information on our Facebook page. I look at that all the time. Yes, the article is in the banner, I like to see it also on the Facebook page. I appreciate the people that showed up tonight at a very important meeting. I noticed across the street, exuberant curbing. Was that in the budget? Has that affected our historical culture of the building of the Bennington train station? It has changed the compass, the vista of the Bennington train station. Is it a historical nature anymore, or because of putting that curbing, has that changed? I think more important things could be done besides the curbing. A few feet down, the depot street bridge needs replacement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Nancy White, Bennington voter writes.
As Mike said, about, it was three days after the last select board meeting, this notice popped up in the Bennington banner classified on the town office website and a few other places. Explains that town officials want to give our town senior center building to Ben High owner Chris Gilbert. It says that under Vermont state law, Bennington voters have 30 days to sign a petition if you don't want this to happen. If 5% of the voters, 486 voters, sign the petition, it requires the select board to put the senior center building on a petition for Bennington voters to decide what will happen with it. Mike and I decided over the weekend to go for the signatures. I've gotten about 25 back, last night, this morning, four citizens have taken petitions. We need about 20 or 25 more people to get a petition. It's easy to get 15 signatures in two or three days. Talk to your friends, your family, your neighbors, and your coworkers. Please ask that the registered voters, if they're going to sign. Please don't sign the petition more than once, and you have to put your street number and street address on it, or the petition won't count. I'm not on social media, but I'll get in touch with people who are. I hope to every four or five days, give people an update about how many signatures we have, how many we have left to go. I'll let people know where you can sign a petition. Get in touch with Mike or I if you want a petition to help out. If people read about this or hear it, and they're shut in and they can't get out and want to sign, call me, I'll bring a petition over. My goal is for as many people as possible to find out and participate if they want to. The people of Bennington have owned and paid for that senior center building for 45 years. I have talked to very few people who want Mr. Gilbert to end up with the building. So we have 15 days counting today to get all the signatures into the town office. They have to be approved by the 29th. I think if people on social media help out, I think between this meeting and the Bennington banner, I think we will get the signatures. So step up Bennington residents and help get this petition signed. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Vicki Lampren, talk about window dressers.
Hi, Vicki Lampren, Bennington. So I wanted to talk to you all about an opportunity. We all love our town, right? We love our neighbors. So I want to talk to you about how you can volunteer to keep your neighbors warm this winter. It's through a program called Window Dressers. And you're probably thinking to yourself, well, what's a window dresser? A window dresser is an insulated window insert that lets in light while stopping drafts. Each insert is made of a custom-made pine frame wrapped around twice, tightly sealed, and it's very clear. It's finished on the outside edges with a compressible foam that helps to, with pressure, hold the insert into your, the inside of your home. You don't have to nail it in, you don't have to tape it, it slips in, it doesn't destroy anything, and then when it warms back up in August next year, you can just pop it out for a week of summer. So if you go Google windowdressers.org, it will give you the option to sign up, to volunteer. Our build is going to be October 6th through the 11th at Monument Arts and Cultural Center, 44 Gypsy Lane. So go to the windodressers.org, you'll click on Community Builds, then you'll go down to Vermont, then you go down to Bennington-Sashire, and then you get to the golden part, which is Sign Up to Volunteer. So we're going to be building these inserts, so what can you do to volunteer? Hmm, some of the things you can do is assemble frames using glue and drills, and guess what? There's going to be people there to show you how to do it. If you'd like, you can provide desserts for the people who are working there, or you could wrap the inserts with tape and plastic foam. So think about spending a few days or a few, you know, a shift of four hours with your friends and your neighbors, and knowing that you're really going to help somebody stay a little bit warmer this winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. All right. Next up, so we have a report summary by, from Megan Harrington, looking at health impact assessment for Ben High. The Health Department has been a fantastic partner on this project, and we were really thankful that they were able to do this health impact assessment. So Megan.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Megan Harrington, I'm the District Director with the Vermont Department of Health in the Bennington District Office. Whoever is timekeeping, I am long-winded, so.
You're not on the same.
I'm not, okay. I'll still take a 30-second warning, though. I do not mind.
Megan?
Yes.
Speak really close to the microphone.
Okay, that's all right. Great, thank you.
And Megan, you have 15 minutes, including questions.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so the Ben High Health Impact Assessment is a collaboration between the Town of Bennington, Hill Resources, and the Vermont Department of Health, Bennington District Office, with support from the VCRC. Our local team proposed developing the HIA for Ben High in August of 2022. We spoke with Zach initially about the idea. Health impact assessments are used to determine the positive and negative effects of a program, policy, or project, with the goal of mitigating any harmful effects and make recommendations to inform stakeholders of the positive health effects that can benefit an entire community. The field of community development has evolved to center health and its efforts to create thriving and sustainable communities. And economic development, by its nature, influences the social determinants of health, which are the rules and systems that govern our lives, impact the opportunities that we have, choices we make, and the health outcomes that we face. So in other words, health impact assessment is a combination of procedures, methods, and tools by which a policy, program, or project may be judged as to its potential effects on the health of a population, and the distribution of those effects within the population. These are some of the guiding values that HIAs follow: democracy, equity, sustainable development, ethical use of evidence, and a holistic approach to health. There are varying degrees of health impact assessments, they can be rapid, take place within a couple days, and they can be much more comprehensive. Our team decided to go for a comprehensive HIA, which utilizes a collection of primary data and incorporates community feedback throughout the process in addition to review of available data. So that part will be, that will be important. Thank you. So all HIAs follow the same structure, wherever they take place and whatever capacity. They all start with a screening, scoping, assessment, recommendations, reporting, and evaluation. The screening was actually a coming together of Hill Resources, the town, VCRC, and BDH to actually determine if it was a good fit, if Ben High project was a good fit for an HIA. And we all agreed that, just given the impacts it could have on health and social cohesiveness, that we decided to move forward with the project. Our steering committee identified priority areas with the understanding that they could shift after we got community feedback. The next part, the assessment, that was when our community feedback really came into play, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. And right now, we're in the reporting phase, it's happening right now. And next up is evaluation, and our team will actually do that following the report, and once things start to get rolling, we'll actually take the findings of our health impact assessment and be able to evaluate those. So I won't go too much into this, into the features of the project, but I can share that the HIA can capture the pre-project status of community health. So this is going, an HIA illustrates our baseline health conditions, and without it, it's difficult to assess the impacts that a big project like this can make over time. So without doing this work at the forefront, and I really commend the town and Hill Resources for kind of wanting to get ahead of this so that we do have this baseline information, it's difficult to say this was a success, this is our lessons learned, this is what we can do different next time. And I would also like to share the role of BDH is neutral, we have no incentives or no financial obligation to support or oppose this project. We are using data and public health frameworks and recommendations that can be adopted or not, and our interest lies in the process and mitigating negative health impacts. So as all good research projects start, we started with some research questions. These were actually determined by the town and by Hill Resources. VDH was hands-off for this, it was not essentially our project, we're just the researchers. And we landed on, what are the current community conditions near Ben High, and what are the potential impacts, both positive and negative, of the Ben High redevelopment project for affected citizens? And you'll see our steering committee up in front there. Thank you. The steering committee identified five priority topic areas, including housing, public safety, social inclusion, and community pride, community services, and disinvestment as our focus Our assessment methodology included like a shared primary data, which was collected through resident surveys, a resident forum. It also targeted a specific neighborhood footprint around Ben High. We were very, very interested in hearing from residents who were in close proximity to the project itself, and those included renters, residents, and we used a paper survey as well as an email distribution list through Hill's Property Management Company. All right, so I'm going to dive into the priority areas, including housing, and I'll just briefly go over these. But you can see some of the results from our survey questions out to the residents within the footprint. When asked about housing, an overwhelming majority said that they were very happy to hear that housing was going to be included in the project. One of the housing features of Ben High is the market rate in the Lytec units. We do note within our findings that mixed-income housing in and of itself does not necessarily produce positive health outcomes. Instead, the community context of the units matters, and I think this is something we talked about, that the Ben High project as a building in and of itself is, there's a lot going on and a lot to offer, but it is the impact it has on the community at large that really those features benefit. So we looked at mixed-income development, and a low-income census tract is essentially effective when revitalization of a vacant building takes place, and not displacing of current households. And you can see here, our housing recommendations, here's a handful, you can see that the priorities really are around social connectivity, and accessibility, maximizing green space, and furthering additional community efforts to promote affordable housing, so that this project in and of itself will not solve the housing crisis in Bennington, but it definitely can alleviate it and can offer guidance for future projects as well. Our next priority area was social connection and pride in place. This is something that's coming up a lot in terms of an aging population, and as the use of technology kind of takes people out of traditional social opportunities and more on the digital sphere, social isolation has been shown to be a predictor of mortality on par with smoking and high blood pressure. And in Bennington, 36.5% of households are occupied by individuals living alone. Now, living alone does not necessarily indicate loneliness, but it contribute to social isolation. And social isolation is defined as kind of lacking a social network that is either limited or is unfulfilling. And so with that in mind, oh, sorry, and I failed to acknowledge the survey results. Do you mind going back, Jonas? Sorry. Of that, oh. Thank you. So the survey here, we found in a typical month, how often do you feel that you have someone you can rely on? And I'd just like to show that about 50% noted that they sometimes seldom or never have a situation where they have someone in their life that they can rely on. So that really plays into the opportunities with Ben High as far as creating environments for social connection, opportunity for facilitated programming to create intergenerational connection. When we did the forum at the senior center, I thought one of the comments from the participants that intergenerational programming, I think a lot of people just think about like stranger teens and stranger seniors and like not having this connection. But one of the participants made a note about how many grandparents are raising grandkids right now, and there is a lack of a space where those two generations can, you know, have programming that's together within the same space. So I thought that was really telling in a group that I hadn't really thought about lacking a place to hang out with their grandkids. All right, and one other thing, and so our social connection, and this kind of plays into the HIA as a whole, that the incorporation of diverse communication engagement strategies. And so I think what we found, just going through this process, was that our resident survey, as well as our community forum, we would have loved to have seen some more participants, and so kind of improving that process, how do we reach residents so that they do feel like they have a say and a voice? It wasn't for lack of trying, it sure felt. We did do a door-to-door survey distribution, and we had one participant show up to our resident forum, so maybe next time we'll get more. Thanks, Jonas. Another topic area is the access to community services. As folks know, there will be a co-location of community services and resources within the space. We thought it was interesting that the respondents to the survey made a note that they never utilized many of the services, some of which are actually already located within the Ben High footprint. So I thought that was worth pointing out. And here are the list of recommendations, I won't go through all of them, but number three under the priorities, as far as pursuing partnerships and shared use agreements, this ability to provide referrals and wraparound services to an organization that's down the hall versus one that's on the other side of town and requires transportation to get to, there's some real potential there for success. And lastly, and I think this is a topic that comes up quite frequently, is the idea around safety and the location of Ben High. From our survey, we did find that of the respondents, you know, over 50% noted that they do not feel safe in this area, which again, is very telling. But some of our recommendations following that is safe streets, features, lighting, sightlines. There's also an opportunity from the Health Department's side as far as identifying more health data to help us pinpoint exactly what the issues of safety are that people are having those perceptions. And also worth noting, I wanted to say for priority number four, in that looking at crime and violence is to be made within the context of poverty and disinvestment. And so when you look at a project like Ben High, which is kind of addressing some of those root causes of poverty as well as investment. those root causes of poverty as well as investment, we do have an opportunity to affect change. So, in conclusion, we really encourage folks to read the report. It's long, but there are some really great ideas in there. I think one of the things we really took away was just a sense of pride and a sense of place, either, you know, just a love of Bennington and downtown, or, as you can kind of see some of these respondents, seeing a future that's not so bright. And so we think the opportunity really here is to, a potential to combat the spatial stigma around this particular neighborhood and around this project. So, a negative reputation that is enforced by residents, by visitors, by public officials, by politicians, or real estate agents, that trickles out and can negatively affect the well-being and health of an individual. So having a strength bank lens and an emphasis on neighborhood and community assets is a great place to start for this project. So in closing, I just want to thank Town of Bennington, Hail Resources, BRCRC, and Naomi Parbek from UVM, and most importantly Rory Price, who really did a lot of the legwork to put this report together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. So we'll follow our usual, any questions or comments from the board? You have, okay.
This is on, I don't know if you went over this specifically in your presentation. It was in our packet.
Oh, the executive summary, yes.
Yeah. So it's page, do you want me to read it?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So it's the section, recommendations, social connection and pride in place, number eight. It says, "Combat spatial stigma. Persist in stereotype constructions of place through training and modeling appropriate person-first and nondiscriminatory language." Can you just explain what that is? I couldn't really wrap my brain around that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I actually made a note of it because I was like, "That's going to come up." So spatial stigma has a lot to do with the perception of place. And so if we are continually speaking about a place, or a people, or a population in a way that is negative, it will become true, and it will actually create a stigma that is really hard to tamper down. And so I think when we think about, talking about Ben High, or any project, any development project, how you speak about that place, you know, in communication, is important. So if, you know, leaders, if community businessmen, if people are not speaking about a place like it's an opportunity, and instead that it's a danger or not safe, and kind of come at it from a negative place, it's really hard to garner the interest to improve it.
Thank you. Words matter.
Words absolutely matter. Absolutely matter.
Thanks.
Can I ask about, follow-up? So, this is the pre-work. What's best practice in terms of looking at the outcomes? I mean, is it something that you do every five years, forever, or once?
Our first step will be to actually evaluate the process of our office, so how we executed the HIA. We first want to be accountable that we did the process correctly and that we followed the structure that's laid out by this. That'll be the first. Once we're able to start collecting data, so it could be a year, two years, five years, 10 years, we'll kind of work with the town and with Hail Resources, see what cadence makes sense for that. Especially as other economic development projects come online, we want to make sure that this process is streamlined and an easy thing to say, "You know what? We have a new project coming online, and we'd love to reach out to the Health Department to do a HIA for this."
Excellent. Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah.
Does anyone else have? If I'm wrong, I apologize. Hail Resources can tell me if I'm right or wrong, but I seem to remember that all the affordable housing units have to be located in the same section of the building to access the funding for that. And I know it has to be that way, and there's nothing we can do about it, but it sort of speaks, it's kind of a shame that they can't be sprinkled about. And I'm just wondering, is that something that we should pursue, not for this project because it wouldn't happen in time, but for future projects? You know, your data and your research really doesn't point to that that's a good idea.
Right, yeah. And so that's something, I think, as far as federal grant-making, to really examine that. They should do an HIA of their own grant-making process to know that they're not following best practice as far as that goes. So we do have some recommendations to address that within here, and that's really having, you know, no differences between the units, or as few as possible, shared access to similar spaces. You know, there really shouldn't be any remarkable difference between the two units, that would suggest, besides just the concentration of one unit versus the other.
Right. Great. And it is lovely that they're all in the same building together. I mean, that's a huge.
Access to same services.
That is huge. But it could be even just a little bit better.
It could be a little bit better.
Okay.
All right. So, for the community comments, what I'm going to ask is that you come up, ask your question, then take your seat, and then Megan can respond to it. And what we'll do, everybody gets, one gets to ask a first round of questions before anyone gets to ask a second round of questions, okay? So Sam, I see your hand is up. Please.
Senior Commissioner of Bennington, Vermont. First question, are you working along with Bennington County?
So, Sam, you're just going to ask your questions and sit down. Okay? So ask them all, okay?
Okay. I'm going to have a question and a statement to tie it in all to one, which is to segue to the next item that's on the agenda. First question, are you currently working with the Bennington Regional Commission?
Sam, you need to ask all your questions. She's not going to respond until you.
All right, I'm asking slow by time, okay?
Okay.
Don't nickel and dime me, please.
All right. So Sam, ask your question.
I got out of high school a long time ago. Class of '81. I reiterate again. Are you part of the Bennington County Regional Commission? Because simply, I attended a meeting, I think it was in April, in May, at the museum, and they kind of talked about having a healthy community. And naturally, when you have a healthy community, you have a sense of pride. When you have a sense of pride, you feel better for yourself, you eat, you have a well-being. And this being tied into the project, property owners have changed. Peter Cross has sold a lot of property, and behind this property is Pleasant Street. Will this splash over into Pleasant Street? And of course, naturally, if you're going to this project to answer Jean Connor's statement, it can splash over to the next block over, which is on Pleasant Street, where Mr. Hale has acquired Dosette Properties to do it. Yes, it's great for health, but I'm totally not convinced. You'll always have poverty, you'll always have homelessness, you'll always have drug issues. It's a hard battle to fight. Thank you. Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, I'm happy to acknowledge that, yes, those human conditions are very real. I think as a community, really tackling the structural issues, so you bring up homelessness, there is a whole slew of the social determinants of health that we can address, you know, as far as that, the power, wealth inequality, educational attainment, those are things that happen at a community level that can then, like you said, kind of reverberate out and affect those other conditions. So, I don't have a, I could have a much longer answer for you, but I think I agree with you.
Other questions? Nancy, please come up.
Nancy White. It seems to me that the steering committee missed a group, that there should have been Bennington residents actually on this. I've been concerned for over two years that the addition is basically a Bennington County project, but only Bennington is going to be paying with ARPA money, with our town budget each year going forward. And again, this has been my concern for a couple of years. It's all Bennington County. I was concerned that the space that we were told last year, we could have all these different things, has now been given away and is going to be two more offices. So I think the more we're hearing about the Ben High, the more I'm seeing the opportunities we were supposed to have be lost. And I guess the only question I have is the social isolation. I've talked to several seniors over the past year who have no desire to go to the Ben High. They like the peace and quiet of the senior building.
Nancy, make sure that you're addressing the report.
This is social isolation.
Right. But address the, so Megan is here as an expert to talk with us about the report.
Okay. Well, I guess my question would be, why were the citizens of Bennington not included on this steering committee? Why is this all Bennington County-based, and only Bennington is going to be carrying the financial load?
Thank you.
All right, thanks Nancy. I will state first, for the steering committee, I believe the majority of us do live in Bennington. Not saying that we shouldn't have had some resident representation. You're definitely right. But that is something lesson learned. We've actually already acknowledged it for our next HIA, that we do want more resident input into that process. We did have three forums for residents, one at the Senior Center, which was our best attendance. We also had a teen forum, as well as the Ben High Footprint Resident Survey Forum as well, as well as a survey people could take as a Google form, or they could call our office, and we could do it over the phone for folks who didn't have internet access or weren't as comfortable with forms. So yes, lessons learned, more impact, I'm sorry, more resident input. I will say, one of our recommendations, as far as the social isolation, was the development of resident committees as part of the HIA that work direct, actually not even as part of the HIA, that work with developers around economic development projects. And so these are, I believe they're called community benefit agreements, and they can be set up alongside with the developer. It's just a mutual relationship where, you know, there can be mitigations, there can be agreements, and ultimately, you know, it builds support for the project where everyone's involved. So that's one of the recommendations in the HIA. So beat me to it.
Oh, sorry. Great. Any other questions? No? All right.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Megan. All right, let's see. So next up, we have town staff talking to us about the Ben High Development Agreement. And this is really the next step in bringing the Ben High redevelopment project to fruition. And Select Board wants to thank the town, staff, and Hail Resources very, very much for the amount of time that you have put into this incredibly exciting project. It is really very much appreciated. And I think it is, I mean, I think Megan's comments are right along the lines of, I think, what all of us on the Select Board have been talking about, which is that the, this project puts together three of the top priorities that the Select Board has had for the last decade. And that is making sure that seniors have the resources that they need, so 50 and older individuals have access to all kinds of services, including companionable services, that we have high-quality, low-cost recreational opportunities for everyone, from birth to, from cradle to cane, as the YMCA likes to say, and that we enhance, expand our housing options. So, the three, I think, highest issues that the Select Board has been concerned about are all wrapped up in this Ben High redevelopment project. So with that, Dan, take it away.
Thank you, Jeannie. As the chairperson mentioned, the main reason that we're here this evening is to talk about the proposed development agreement that formalizes the public-private partnership between Hail Resources and the town. We are going to do a quick summary of where we've been and where we're going, really, really quickly, because we've talked about this as our sixth meeting, and last two meetings, we essentially presented the same information as we're going to present tonight, but we want to get everybody on the same page. As part of that summary, we're just going to talk about the property, the scope of the project, you know, the proposed development agreement, and then a funding update, et cetera. So we'll go through those really quickly, but that's kind of the summary of what we're going to talk about this evening. I'm going to kick-start off by handing it over to Shannon to talk about the property and the vision, and what this redevelopment's going to look like, and then I'll come back for the boring stuff, the terms and conditions of the development agreement, which we've all talked about before, but we'll go over it again. So, Shannon.
Thanks, Dan. Hi, everyone. So, actually, I get the fun part because I get to show all the photos and pictures. So we're talking about the former Bennington High School, middle school, also known as the Junior High, located at 650 Main Street and consisting of approximately 100,000 square feet on 2.29 acres, built in 1914, the original part of the building on the National Register of Historic Places. So, the scope and vision is a public-private partnership made up of the town and Hail Resources LLC, our local partners. The town space will be approximately 27,000 square feet, 14,000 square feet of that occupied by the Bennington Senior Center and Meals on Wheels. And just to give you an idea, our current space, the building, the town senior center that houses both the senior center and Meals on Wheels, is over, it's around 5,000 square feet. So this really is greatly expanding that footprint for senior services. There'll also be 13,000 square feet of gym space, exercise activity rooms, locker and changing rooms operated by the YMCA for our town recreation programs. And then the residential space will include 70,000 square feet of a mix of both market-rate and affordable housing, a childcare facility on the ground level that will also be operated by the YMCA. And then there will be, on the backside along Pleasant Street, the office space, which is approximately 3,000 square feet, and that will be also, you know, working with those other programs because the proposed tenants for that space are the Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging and UVM Extension. So this is an aerial photo of the current condition of Ben High. That's a lot of building. That's a very large building to be vacant since 2004. I don't think it's an accident that there are problems, you know, of crime, et cetera, that are happening around such a large amount of space that's been vacant and deteriorating for a long period of time. So the vision is not only to, you know, create a functional, you know, use for all this space, but I think, I really appreciate what Megan had to say of grounding us in the long-term impact of how this redevelopment can impact the entire neighborhood and our Main Street, since it shares both Main Street and Pleasant Street-facing sides. So this is just an image of, that was the parking lot, here's the elevations on the exterior, which will be improved, namely with more windows, particularly on the newer section where there'll be apartments. And then this rendering is of the currently courtyard that's paved, will become a green space and an access point to a new entrance to what will be the community center space of Ben High. And then that's just a zoomed-out, so you can see kind of a drop-off area and some bike racks and some other gathering spaces. Also, a site for a bus drop-off, right in front of what will be the, where the, there'll be another entrance, which is the current entrance for the Meals on Wheels dining area and a bus stop right there. So the ground, what we're calling the ground floor, because it is in the basement level, but there is a lot of natural light all around the perimeter of the building, so that space will be occupied by a new childcare center that will serve, I believe it's 100-plus children because it is a large space, it's 11,000 square feet. And so that's going to be from infant all the way through pre-K, as well as some after-school programming as needed. And then the first floor will include, I guess the easiest way to show it is the yellow is the recreation area that includes the gymnasium, and then the changing rooms and the exercise rooms. The kind of turquoise blue is the housing on, in the historic part of the building, market-rate units. There'll be a community space in the center, which was There'll be a community space in the center, which was the old library, and that can be used for a meeting space. And then the orange space will be the senior center, and the pink area will be the Meals on Wheels kitchen, as well as office spaces, and then this kind of, this area is the multi-purpose dining area for Meals on Wheels, as well as other programming that happens after Meals on Wheels hours. And then the office spaces that will be Council on Aging and UVM Extension are the purple up on top. And then this is the second floor of the entire building, will be housing, both market-rate and affordable. The affordable units will be all in the newer section above the old auditorium. So these are some renderings of those spaces. So these are in the older part of the building. It gives you an idea of how the spaces will still keep that feeling of the old classrooms, you know, using the, the slate chalkboards, you know, maintaining the, the windows there that really have amazing views of Mount Anthony on the west side, and then using some glass in the bedroom area so that you get a sense of the full space. And this is a rendering of the non-market-rate units. There are also going to be really nice apartments that are very deep, you know, those are long spaces. For those of you who went to Ben High, those were the science classrooms. And, and they also have a lot of great natural light, because they're all facing south there. These are some renderings of the future Meals on Wheels dining area and the auditorium, also with natural light coming on that whole south side with some more windows being added to the space. It's going to be quite a bit bigger than their current dining area. And then the kitchen area will be right adjacent to that in the old cafeteria, and that will be, really, it's been a well-designed space with a lot of input. Goldstone Architecture has, they're at their final design right now, working on construction drawings, and we've had multiple meetings with senior center, Meals on Wheels staff, Council on Aging, to really make sure that that program of how the space will be used is meeting everyone's needs. And everyone is happy and gave it the thumbs up at our last meeting. So this will, this will give Meals on Wheels a way to have all of their equipment and their, their storage of, you know, cold and frozen food, as well as the storage of all the meals that they're preparing for delivery, really organized in a way. If you've been to their space now, you see, you know, that they're making it work, but, but this is going to be a great improvement to help them out. And then this is a rendering of what will be the senior center space, the, the kitchen right now is, is kind of the heart of the senior center, and there'll be a very similar full-size kitchen in the new space. I'm going to pass it back to Dan.
All right, so how are we going to make all this happen? All that great stuff. So first, just a little where we are currently. The property is owned by Mr. Chris Gilbert. The town has site control over the property. We have a, a signable long-term lease that includes a purchase option, as well as the option to terminate if, if we're unable to proceed. So that's currently where we are with regard to the ownership and site control. So as you recall, at the last meeting when we discussed this project, the Select Board authorized town staff to negotiate a development agreement, which would memorialize the public-private partnership between the parties, Hail Resources and the town. The, the major terms of that development agreement were reviewed, and we went over them at the last couple of meetings, so most of this stuff, in fact, all this stuff you will have seen before, but we're just, want to make sure that everyone understands those terms, which we discussed and agreed to, are now reflected in the development agreement and the formal agreement that we'll be asking you to authorize the town manager to sign. So how, what's, what's in that development agreement? How are we going to, how, how do we propose to accomplish this project? The, the development agreement really lays out a roadmap for that. So first step, as, well, overall, we know that, as we discussed last time, the proposal is for Hail Resources or an affiliate to purchase Ben High, and for the town to be a tenant. So we can go over that, how, we're going to go over how those, what those specific terms are. So Hail Resources will procure bonds and secure funding for construction of the entire project, including the town space, that's number one, and we're working really hard with the Hails on that first step. Once that has occurred, the town will assign its lease option to the Hail Resources folks, and they will exercise that option and buy Ben High. Currently, that is scheduled for honor before June 30, 2024, but it's, it can't go any later than October of 2024 to ensure that the ARPA funds are spent in a timely manner. So that's reflected in the development agreement, obviously. As we've mentioned, the purchase of price of Ben High includes the transfer of the current senior center in accordance with the terms of the lease. So once the new property is, is outfitted for the senior center and Meals on Wheels with a new expanded space, the town will transfer the, the obsolete senior center to Chris Gilbert, and it will be returned to the tax rolls. So we'll be generating tax revenue once that's transferred over to Mr. Gilbert. And that is currently scheduled for honor before December 31 of 2025. And as reflected in the agreement, Hail Resources has taken responsibility to timely complete the project to make sure that that transfer happens. All right, so an important component of this project is the town space lease. As we mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, that's about 27,000 square feet of, of space that, that the town intends to, to lease from Hail Resources. And Hail Resources is responsible for constructing, constructing the town space in accordance with a design that, that the town approves, and the town will be responsible for installing such things as furnishings, computer equipment, security equipment, et cetera. The town will then sublease a portion of that space to Meals on Wheels for their, for their operations, and the town intends to contract with YMCA to manage the recreational space for the town. Okay. Also, as part of that lease, the town has agreed, as we've discussed many times in the past, to contribute $2 million in ARPA funds for the construction of the town space. As we mentioned at the previous meetings, the construction cost to outfit up the space, just the town space, is over $8 million. So there's, the, the Hails will be responsible for raising and paying for the, the balance of the amount of money that will be needed to fit up that space for the town. The initial town space lease term will be at least 15 years, with a 35-year renewal term, or capital investment reimbursement by Hail Resources of all the town spent, of all the ARPA funds spent on the construction of the project. And that will be, that would occur at the end of the initial term if the 35-year renewal term is not executed. This is really the only change, minor change to the terms that we had mentioned in the previous two meetings. The initial term was, was contemplated to be 20 years. We now have it at 15 years. We compensated that for, with a longer renewal term, and that is really predicated on some requirements in the Historic Preservation Tax Credits regulations that don't allow you to have a lease longer than that. So that's why we've, why we structured it this way, is 15 instead of 20. But again, the total length of the term is, is as contemplated, a very long 50-year term. And we've agreed to the lease payment significantly below market at 750 a square foot, and as we mentioned before, a portion will be leased to UVM Extension and Council on Aging. At least that's the contemplated, what's contemplated now. Also included in the town space lease will be, the documents, the lease documents will address shared use of interior spaces, shared use of exterior facilities, like drives and parking, and the shared uses of utility services, you have fire suppression systems and other infrastructure that, other infrastructure that was shared, be shared throughout the building, and we'll have to pay for a proportionate share of that in a lease. All right. Also included in the development agreement is how, you know, how maintenance, management, and repairs we handle at the building. Hail Resources will be responsible for the maintenance, management, and repair of the entire building, less the town space that we occupy, and most of the building systems, including the roof system. The town will be responsible for maintenance of the leased interior area of the town space, so we'll be doing the, we'll obviously be responsible for janitorial services, those sorts of things, within our space. And we've currently agreed that it makes the most sense financially for us to do site maintenance, maintenance, like plowing and mowing, but we won't be responsible for capital improvements like repaving, et cetera, of the, of the exterior space, of the exterior shared spaces. All right, so this is kind of a, just big picture of how all this is going to get paid for. As we mentioned, the town's commitment is $2 million in ARPA funds and the transfer of the old senior center. We will be making lease payments on the, on the lease that's contemplated. We have spent pre-development costs, design, et cetera, and then we have some operating costs, such as utilities, that the town will be responsible for. The lion's share of the costs will be borne by Hail Resources. It's approximately a $29 million-plus project, including construction and, and soft costs. So that is the responsibility of Hail Resources. As we've mentioned many times, we are working with them to find as many grants, et cetera, that we can to facilitate the project, but Hail Resources is ultimately responsible for those, for that funding stack. And Hail Resources will also be responsible for all building maintenance, management, and repair, except for the interior town space. So that kind of gives you an idea of how this will be paid for, both the construction and afterward, where the responsibilities are. Okay. All right, so I'm going to leave this really fun chart up to Shannon. This is a funding update. Where is all the money coming from, and what's our status? So I know Shannon and Zach are the experts on this, so I'll let Shannon go first.
Well, I'll actually say that Zach Hale, who's here, is the true expert on this whole funding stack, and so if we have some detailed questions, we'll direct them to Zach and John, who are here. But just to give an overview of how we're going to get there, so if you can see the, the bright green and then the blue, this project is really split into what we're calling condos, but think of them as two separate ownership structures. One for the low-income housing tax credit portion, you know, the affordable housing units are funded, and they have to be their own unit, and then the other unit being all of the housing, as well as the town space, et cetera, the majority of the building, is the blue. So if you look at that breakdown, the majority of funding really is coming through various kinds of tax credits, also grants, and then private equity. So when it comes to grants, we're looking at state and mostly federal grants for affordable housing, economic development, particularly because there's a childcare facility now within this project, and that's a huge driver of, you know, economic development, job creation, et cetera, and such an important need in the community. There's also grant funding available for energy efficiency. So, so that's really kind of the high level, what we're doing, as much as we can from the town, we're helping. So for example, Community Development Block Grants, which are HUD, Housing and Urban Development Funding, that comes through the municipality. We're working with the Hails on. We also applied to all of our representatives for congressionally-directed spending, and we were nominated by Representative Becca Ballant for $1 million for the Ben High project. So if the federal government can pass their budget, hopefully we will, we will get that funding. And then the tax credits are going to be a mix of Historic Preservation Tax Credits, given that this building is on the National Register of Historic Places, also low-income housing tax credits, which have been awarded, and New Market Tax Credits. And New Market Tax Credits are a way to bring in private investment to areas that are distressed economically, to spur economic growth. So the Putnam Project is an example of, of a project that was funded with New Market Tax Credits. And then private equity, including, you know, some of these things are in process and have been awarded, and others are, are in, in process and have been applied for. So, including the 10% for Vermont program through the Treasurer's Office, which would be an important low income, I mean, low-interest loan for this Ben High development. And then I'm going to pass the ownership structure, again, very complex, back to Dan.
So I'm just going to do a real high-level overview of the ownership structure and how the funding is going to pass through that ownership structure, and then if you have any detailed questions, I'm going to have to talk to Zach about those, that. But this, this slide, as long, as well as all the slides, and the next slide, will all be online, so if you want to take time to really look at this, and you have questions, let us know, and we'll probably ask Zach and get back to you. But essentially, as Shannon mentioned, there will be two ownership structures, one for the low, low-income housing tax credit property or apartments, those are the affordable housing apartments, and then there will also be one for what we're calling the New Market Tax Credit Section, which is everything else, the market rate, the town space, et cetera. So this one's a little more, a bit more straightforward, the affordable housing ownership structure. There'll be an affiliate of Hail Resources that will be the owner, and then you'll see that there will be, the funding will flow through the entity that Hail Resources leases to, a long-term lease. You see the loans that flow in, the grants, and then the equity all flows in, and then that entity leases to the tenants. So you can see the way the money flows, you see that the ultimate ownership is with Hail Resources. But that's how that has to be set up in order to access the funding that's, that's for that, for those units. This one's a little bit more long. I try to be, I try to, I try to give it at least some, make it somewhat understandable. So I'm going to, I think I'm going to have to use my pointer on this one, just because. So right here, that's the Hail Resources affiliate that's going to be the overall owner of the project. They have to partner with a nonprofit entity in order to facilitate the funding, and right now, that's NeighborWorks. We expect that to be the case still, correct? NeighborWorks has agreed to, to be the nonprofit partner to allow for funding to flow through to make sure that all the funds go towards the project and not to taxes. So that, Hail Resources will partner with, with NeighborWorks to, to have those funds flow through. Ultimately, there will be an entity that will lease all of the property to the town of Bennington, the YMCA childcare folks, and all the other tenants that are, that are market-rate. So you can see from this chart, if you take some time to look at it, I looked at it for a couple hours today, and I think I got it all figured out. You can see how all the money flows into this ownership structure, but I think the important thing to, to recognize is that it's really a Hail Resources entity that's at the top of the pyramid here, so they will be ultimately responsible for the project. So, next steps. Today, we're here to ask for the Select Board to authorize the town manager to execute the development agreement with Hail Resources. As we, as we mentioned, this, the development agreement does implement the terms and conditions that the Select Board reviewed and approved at the last couple of meetings. We talked about any, any changes that, that may have happened as we negotiated this agreement. Moving forward, we're going to continue to work with Hail Resources to secure funding. Shannon gave you a snapshot of what that means, and we're going to continue to work with the Hails. They're doing the real heavy lifting on this, I have to say, so very, very happy to have them as a partner. And then we'll be back in the next 92, 120 days to update the Select Board on, and the public on, on our project, on our progress. So we'll keep, keep moving forward and letting you know where we are with the funding, et So I guess next up is questions. I've got Zach and John and Craig Miskovich here to answer really tough technical questions, but the rest of it, I think Shannon and I will try to, try to deal with. And so we're, we're available here to answer any questions about the development agreement or any specific, you know, terms regarding the public-private partnership going forward.
Great, okay. Thank you for giving us this level of detail, and we will all study the documents online. So we'll start with the Select Board. Any questions or comments from any of us?
I have a comment that I'd like to make. I think that the town staff has heard me say this before, but I'm not so sure that John and Zach have heard me say it. I moved to Bennington in June of 2005 to begin my role as the publisher of the banner, and the headlines were what to do with the middle school, as it was referred to then, because it was its because it was its last use. And we are sitting here 19 years later with a solid plan. So thank you for all the heavy lifting. Nobody thought it would take 19 years to get to this point, but I am, I'm very appreciative of where we are today.
Thank you, Dan. Any other? Garrett? Yeah?
Dan, I asked this question at the time, just to make sure that the building, the way it's put together with Hail Resources owning it, will still be on the tax rolls?
Yes, it will remain on the tax rolls. When it was transferred to the, after the school, it went on the tax rolls, albeit at a very low rate, at a very low value. It will, it will remain on the tax rolls, and the new value will be reflected once it's improved as, in the assessment.
So Neighbor Works being a nonprofit doesn't affect that?
No, they, they will, they will not be owning it. That's a very good question. And that's why we have the experts here, so.
Yes.
A minute ago, you said that, that Neighbor Works was involved so that the monies would go toward the project and not to taxes. Could you just flesh that a little?
So I'm, I'm going to do my best, and then if I mess up, Zach can come here and fix it. So it's important to have a nonprofit so that the money, as it flows in, isn't considered income and have to, and have to be paid income tax on it. So you want all the money that you can to flow into actually doing the project as opposed to paying for taxes. Am I, do I have that right? I got the thumbs up from the experts, so I got that correct.
And really, the way, the reason this whole funding thing looks as complicated as it is, is primarily because of the way the federal government says we do business?
It's primarily due to the new market tax credits. Is that a fair statement, as well as the low-income housing tax credits? Do you have to create these processes, I guess, to, to make sure that you can take full advantage of those tax credits?
Great question, yes. When I was looking at the drawings, the renderings, I don't think Megan's gone, but the HIA did not even address the fact that the childcare center is going to be in the building, because I don't think it was on anybody's radar. So I guess I am going to go out on a limb here and say that the HIA would definitely be, would look favorably at the fact that there's a childcare center in this building.
Yeah, the more, the more services you have in the building, the better, and it's definitely.
And all those people, that would be positively affected by having wonderful childcare for their kids.
Yes.
Yes. Any other questions from the board? No? All right. So we'll open it up to community questions, and again, it's the same process. Come up, ask your question, sit down, and then we will have staff or Hail Resources respond. Any questions? Yes, Sam, please come up.
Since the last time this was discussed, the environment of the neighborhood has changed. Property owners have acquired new property that affects this project. I have a question on one particular project, property, how it is going to affect the project. Question number two, is all funding certified for this project for a green light to go?
Sam, Sam, can you go back to question one and give enough information so they can respond? No, 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 I, I'm saying, go ahead and ask your questions, but tell them what property you're concerned about. I don't think they can answer the question unless you tell them.
Oh, the said property that we're all looking on, the corner of Pleasant Street and Main Street.
Okay.
The one that I brought up at two Select Board meetings ago. And then thirdly, like I said, is funding is covered? And when you have numerous amenities coming into one structure, naturally you have a board. So how, you know, your, your structure is only good as your board.
So the, just the change in ownership has not impacted this project at all. It remains in separate and distinct ownership. Is there a possibility that, that that property could be purchased and become part of this project? It's possible, but as far as I know, there's no negotiations currently, correct, Zach? Okay. The second question, I don't know, maybe you can help me. You said it's a funding covered. I'm not sure about that, so I'll ask you to, to clarify. And then as far as a board is concerned, this is going to be a privately-held property, so there'll be a landlord-tenant relationship between those who occupy it and the folks that own it.
So Sam, yeah, can you clarify your second question?
Well, if there's a tenant and landlord, there's a sense of management. I'm questioning if a certain management is going to be, once this project is built and up and running, management does change in maintaining a property.
Sam, I think it was your second question about cost. Yeah?
Well, it coincides both. I'm questioning, once it's up and running, it's a big building to maintain and manage.
Okay.
And, and your management is as good as your maintenance.
So as we've mentioned in the, in the presentation, that it will be, Hail Resources will be responsible for management of the building. And your management company will be, be the one managing the entire property, correct? So that answers, that answers who will be managing it. You're looking at the folks right here, so.
Great. All right, so thank you.
So it'll be locally maintained, not an outside source that we're not closely in conversation with. If there's an amenity, it's located out in Boston or New York City or Connecticut.
Sam.
That's a distant amenity. It can happen.
Sam, thank you. Other questions? Yes, thank you, Nancy. You have to put your hand up, you're so far back in the room.
Nancy White. Dan, did you talk about the tax stabilization?
Nancy, ask your questions. It's not a back-and-forth.
Okay, well, just if he said, I didn't hear it, and I'd watch it on TV, I'd go on to something else.
I can answer that question. I'm sure you have others.
Okay, well, yeah. Well, I'm not going to ask them all at once. I read that you want to bill our town budget a $26,000 school tax. That would be paid for by the Y or the school system, which is funded by four towns with school taxpayers. I still haven't seen a breakdown of the $197,000 a year this is supposed to cost the town budget. Does that include the cost of the one or two custodians the town will need? If not, what will that cost? The fact that you want the taxpayers to pay of Bennington to plow, mow, landscape, maintain the entire side, outside of the property for years to come? That was last year when Bennington was going to own the property. We in Bennington have no reason to have to pay that. The Hales own it. We're only going to be renting, what, 20% of the property? I'm interested to know who will be paying to renovate the gym? I thought two years ago, I read that Mr. Gilbert had gotten a grant of about $190,000 to renovate the gym. Did that ever go through? If, if so, what happened to the money? You want me to stop?
Are those all your questions?
No, I've got more. You want me to keep going?
Well, you're welcome to.
I asked for several months last year for a time and day so Bennington residents could go through and see the addition. The answer was, we couldn't go in because of renovations. I was told that people and groups have been able to go in this year, and I'd like to know when Bennington residents can go take a tour. In April, I think it was about 76 kids in the daycare in the basement, and now I'm hearing over 100. Do you know how many over 100? If a stove and oven isn't allowed in the basement, how do you feed that many kids hot nutritious meals in the winter? The playground is supposed to be.
So Nancy, some, some of your questions might, you're starting to veer into questions that, for instance, the YMCA, who will have the childcare center, would answer. So really, focus your questions on the topic at hand.
Well, I was hoping that Jessica, the Y CEO, would be here, because several of my questions are for the Ys.
Well, it's not appropriate at this time. I'm sure that will happen, that.
It's about the agreement.
This is about the agreement, right. And, you know, and you can ask general questions about the building, but how the YMCA is going to run the childcare center is veering off. So no, so, so, I mean, no one's going to answer that one, because it's unknown at this point.
So nobody knows how many kids are approved for the, I'm just trying to figure how many employees, just with that daycare take-up. A building question would be, what will the two houses be used for next to Ben, the Ben High on Pleasant Street, where the playground's going to be out back? If the senior center goes to the Ben High, will the town of Bennington continue to operate it, as was promised in the past, or will the Y take it over? Are there any parking spaces dedicated to the apartments, or are those just up for grabs?
What was that question?
For people renting apartments, will there be any assigned parking for any of those spaces? Or is it first come, first served? I'm thinking if somebody is physically challenged.
We got the question, right? You got the question.
When you're talking about the town renting the space, we have to pay to maintain the interior. Does that include repairs? As far as, well, can I ask about contracts or no?
If it relates to this contract, yes.
I'm, okay, for the senior contract, when you said two years ago, Jeanie, that the town of Bennington needs to provide programming for all the seniors in the, in Bennington County, and Stu confirmed that, I'd like to know why Bennington taxpayers should have to pay so all the seniors in Bennington County.
So that, again, is veering off. That really has nothing to do with this agreement.
Well, it has to do with the funding.
And Nancy, you and I can talk about it at a different time. The seniors actually took a vote. They asked us to open up the senior center to anyone that wanted to go and not charge them. And so Nancy, that is off, that is not on target. Ask questions that have to do with this presentation, please.
Has Neighborhood Works worked with apartments before? I thought they just worked with houses. Will this be the first time they're getting into working with apartments? Can you tell the public right now what this is going to cost the Bennington taxpayers per year if this goes forward? And is the, is the Y going to do anything with after-school programs on the first floor, or will it all be in the basement?
That's Y operation.
So please take the Y questions out of this, because it is not, they are not appropriate.
But the Y is a huge part of this, and.
Nancy, Nancy, so are the housing units. So we are having, we are having a presentation tonight. You have experts here, they are financed, we're looking at finance and the operating agreement. Any question related to that is fair game. How the Y is going to set up their programs is not.
While seeing as the town of Bennington taxpayers are paying the YMCA, I think I have the right to ask the question.
Nancy, I'm just telling you what, do you have any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if I have a follow-up, can I come back up?
After, if there's anyone else that hasn't asked a question, they will go first, yes.
All right, I think I got them all, but you guys can prod me if, if I miss one. Nancy asked about tax stabilization. That is a topic that we will discuss. It's in the agreement that it will be something the Select Board will consider, and it may or may not be implemented, depending upon what the Select Board decides. We have a policy that's been in place for probably 30-plus years about how tax stabilization is determined, what's appropriate, and we would follow that policy, and the Board has the ultimate decision-making regarding that. So that's tax stabilization. I'm not sure what Nancy was referring to with regard to school tax. I think what she might have been referring to is that the, because this property does go on the tax rolls, that part of a cost to the town will be taxes as a tenant, that you would pay as a, as a triple-net tenant. And the $26,000 would be, I believe, I have to look back at the numbers, would be the tax that would go to the school district. Obviously, the taxes that we pay for municipal taxes comes back to us, so that's a wash. But that may be what she was referring to. And I will remind everybody that all of those details regarding costs was included in the last presentation in excruciating detail, and I'm happy to go over those, but I think it'd be better for folks to just look at the last presentation. And it, all those details regarding how much the lease is going to cost, how much maintenance is going to cost, how much utilities are going to cost, and all of that is all detailed very explicitly in the previous presentation. We just didn't think it would be appropriate to go through all that again, because it has not changed. That refers to Nancy's next question, which was the $197,000 a year. That is referring to the lease payment. And she asked if costs for custodians and other maintenance costs were included. Yes, that is included in the separate line item that's very clearly indicated on the last presentation. As far as the plowing and mowing is concerned, so what would happen is if, if we did not, as a town, do the plowing and mowing, we would be assessed the cost, our proportionate cost, to maintain the property, the plowing and mowing, et cetera. And we've made an initial determination that it would be less expensive for us to just have our folks do it, since we already have the staff. It may be that we change our minds, and we say to the Hales, look, you know what? We're just going to pay our proportionate share. But as of now, we think it's more cost-effective, and we've looked at those numbers, and we feel pretty confident about that. We have been maintaining it already, and so we know what that, we know what that level of effort is. As far as renovation of the gym, Mr. Gilbert did begin some renovations, but as part of the build-out of the rec space, Hail Resources will complete that renovation, and that's all included in the cost estimates for the renovation. As far as the time and date for the general public to go in and see Ben High, I have been told by my building inspector that I'm not allowed to let people just wander through the building, so I don't expect there to be a tour anytime soon in person, although one of the things that Jonah has talked about, and I think it's a great idea, maybe easy from forgotten, but that we could do a video tour and put it up on Cat TV so folks can kind of see the, the existing conditions. Some of the existing conditions are not that pretty and are not, that's not a good place for people to be in, so we're hoping that, that gets, with this project, all of that gets taken care of. As far as, and I know that, I just, maybe we know the answer to this question, and I know it's not relevant to this particular project, but Zach, do you know how many children the YMCA plans to serve in the childcare space? I know it's about 100.
104.
104, so.
104.
104 children. So as far as how the YMCA is going to take care of meals, we'll let them answer that question, but I do know it's been discussed, and they do have a, a method for doing that. They have a very, very similar facility in Pittsfield, and they do just fine. It's, it's in the ground-floor space, and they've, they've been able to, to do that very well. As far as parking is concerned, we did present a very detailed parking study at the last couple of meetings, so that does outline how the parking will occur. The only assigned parking that we anticipate currently is reserving spaces for folks who will be occupying or accessing Meals on Wheels in the senior center during the day. There will also be obviously park spaces for mobility-challenged folks as well, that will be reserved just for those folks, in accordance with ADA. So we have a detailed parking study that you can look at from the last presentation, and it details how many parking spaces, et cetera, but we do, we have agreed to, to assign certain parking during the day to the users of the Meals on Wheels program, as well as the senior center, and it will be significantly more parking than they have at the current facility. So as far as what the town will pay to maintain the interior, we'll be doing janitorial services, cleanup, that sort of thing. As far as systems are concerned, the Hales will be responsible if the geothermal system goes in to supplying the, the. goes in to supplying the geothermal water, or heat, or air to the units in the space, and we would be responsible for ensuring that our individual equipment was maintained. So, for instance, a heat pump or something that was inside the building. You asked about, Nancy asked about NeighborWorks experience in projects similar to this. Zach, can you talk about that as far as, I mean, they've done very similar projects in the past, correct? As far as, as far as them being a partner in redevelopment, is that correct? So, this would be their first time doing this? Okay. But, so they would be very similar to what BCIC did for the Putnam, and they didn't have any experience either. It's really up to Hale to make sure that this works, and they're just a pass-through. So, there's not really a lot of necessity for them to have experience. BCIC did it for the Putnam project, very similar amount of money without any problem. As far as the cost of the taxpayer per year for this project, we did a very detailed analysis, again, at the last, at the last meeting, which included the lease payments of about $200,000 a year, utilities, everything that would be included in those, in that particular cost were detailed in that last meeting. And, let's see if I've gotten them all. I think that's everything. Nancy may remind me if I've forgotten something, but I think that that's all the questions that Nancy asked.
Hi, Zach Hale, Hale Resources. I just wanted to address a couple of questions that I thought I could go to a little more detail on. First of all, Sam had asked about the management company. I do want to assure you that the full intent right now is for our company to manage this, so locally managed. When it came to the, I think Nancy asked a little bit about jobs too, and I think it's pretty cool and important to include that. The plan is that there will be 24 new jobs created from this project and about 17 that are retained. She also asked about the properties directly next to Ben-High, 323 Pleasant Street through 319. Those will remain as apartments. And then there was the question on NeighborWorks. And NeighborWorks isn't going to be involved in the management of this. They're brought in as really a lender, so they are what's called a CDFI, which they are a lender. That is what they do for business. So, they are experienced in that. They have funded a lot of apartments, like the renovation of apartments in Bennington, and have been a huge partner in bringing units up to code and everything, so they have experience in that as well. But again, they'll just be acting as a lender. And there was then just a quick question about the, the first floor of the building will be utilized for many different purposes, including some of the childcare stuff, so. I think that then covers everything that you asked, Nancy, so.
Other questions? Yes, please.
I have three questions about the financial portion of the contract. But first, is there an estimate of how much of the funding stack has already been secured? I don't know, is it 50%, 70%, something less? I don't know if you have a guesstimate about that. As far as this contract, on page three, under the project financing, I think it's item four, you talk about a grant of $160,000 from the town program income. Is that the revolving fund, or is that something different, is my question? And then, if it is a grant, is that something that would, if it is part of that loan program, does this get repaid, or is it truly a grant that reduces the overall amount in that fund? And then my other question on the contract is on page five. Let's see, item E, which is the first item. I'll let you get there, Dan. The town shall pay an annual rent of $750, da-da-da, and that sentence ends with triple-net. And I'm just wondering what the heck is triple-net, or if you can explain what that is. It just seems like an odd word, and I don't know what that is. So, it'd be helpful if you could explain that a little bit. And those are my questions.
Good questions. Okay. I'm going to answer the last one first, and then I think Zach can probably answer the funding question, and then Shannon can handle the $160,000 town grant. So, triple-net means that the tenant is responsible for utilities, taxes, insurance, others, typical costs like that. There's, you know, kind of two ways that you can do leases. The typical commercial lease is triple-net, where you pay a lease payment, and then on top of that, you pay for utilities, et cetera. Sometimes, rarely these days, but sometimes you'll have a landlord who'll say, "Okay, I'll lease you this for X dollars a square foot, and I'll do the heat, you know, and the water and all that." That's more typical in a residential lease, but in commercial leases is the typical practice. So, that's what triple-net means. Certainly understand, most people wouldn't, wouldn't have a clue what that term means because it's, it's something that you just use in commercial leases. And then, so Shannon, do you want to talk about the town grant?
Good question. You dug into that funding stack. So, the, okay, so we have, the town actually has a couple of different revolving loan funds. Our larger revolving loan fund is from, they're all, they're all created with Housing and Urban Development federal funds, right? That were kind of left over from older projects. But the, the main revolving loan fund that we use, we don't have to report on every year back to the state because it's from, you know, the 1980s. So, we have another smaller fund that's $160,000 that I believe was started, I don't know the year, but I know it was started for some micro loans. Some were given out to mobile home park residents to improve their properties, and we haven't been using it, in part because there's quite a lot of reporting on it, if anybody knows anything about HUD. And so, I talked with the state about what sort of leeway could the town have in using those funds, because they are HUD funds, Housing and Urban Development. So, really, the goals of HUD are, you know, creating affordable housing, you know, improving blighted properties, creating jobs, all of the things that we go down our list of Ben-High. And so, the state has approved that those could be used as a grant for the affordable housing section, for example. Now, the final piece of that would need to be discussed in a public meeting. We have to make sure that we've filled out all of the various things to make that happen, but it seems like a good way to use those remaining funds that we haven't been using. I hope that wasn't too long-winded.
So, in terms of funding, I would say that we're about 60% of the way there committed. When it comes, well, it gets a little complicated because you have to have money to spend in order to raise tax credits. One of the, for condo one, we are fully funded except for one grant, which is VHC-B, and that is $2 million, which has been reserved. And then, we have a board meeting on the 21st. For condo number two, we've raised all but $1 million of the grant that we've been awarded, and then we have the appropriations. We're working on those new market tax credits, and then the debt for that as well. But when it comes to the tax credits, if we can raise the rest of the money, then this is an awesome project, and there's a lot of support around it. So, short answer, probably about 60% of the way there. Longer answer, we're working hard on it and have a lot of paths and avenues, and we're confident that we can raise the rest of the money, so.
Great. Thank you. All right, seeing none, I'm thinking that maybe we want to vote. Yes? So, would love to have a motion authorizing the town manager to execute the Bennington-High development agreement.
Move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition or abstentions? None? Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And thank you for giving us this much detail. It's really, really wonderful.
And you've all your hard work.
And all your hard work, yes. Which brings us to errors and omissions. Such a great title. Stu?
Yes. Generally, around this time of year, if in fact there are any, the Board of Listers will recognize that it may have made an error or an omission in the development of the grand list, which is based on property valuations as of April 1 of a given year. We generally file our grand list on or about June, mid-June, with the town clerk's office. In this case, we found that the listers did make an error, and they have reported that error to you. It is a, an assessment error which actually drops the value of a piece of property by some 30, I'm sorry, by $56,000 for a property at 2613 Chapel Road. It was an oversight on an appeal that had been misfiled by the lister's office, and in order for this to be added or corrected, the grand list, the select board must formally amend the grand list by a vote this evening.
All right. And so, we need a motion to formally amend the grand list, as indicated, on the chief lister's submission.
Move.
All right. Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any abstentions or nays? Nope? Okay. Super. Thank you very much. Next up, our appointments to boards and commissions. So, we had three open seats on the Community Policing Advisory Review Board, or CPAR, for three-year appointments, and one open seat on the Historic Preservation Committee to fill an unexpired term for this year. And so, we have a slate, and I'm also really happy to say that we have the four individuals present here. So, let's vote, and then maybe they can come up and just say hello at the, at the mic. So, let's see. So, the three, the, for the slate, the three individuals that we are nominating for the Community Policing Advisory Review Board include Lindsey Brillan, Kate Cost, and Vicki Lampren. And the one individual that we are nominating for the one-year unexpired term to the Historic Preservation Committee is Thomas Sheets. Do I have a motion to move that slate?
So move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Nope? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any abstentions? Tom, yes.
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Tom was not, yes, Tom was not present. And any nays? Nope? All right. Excellent. So, I'm going to ask Thomas Sheets, would you come up for the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission? And would Lindsey Brillan, Kate Cost, and Vicki Lampren come up? And just, yeah, just state your name, just come up and say hi.
Hi, Thomas Sheets. Very excited to be on the commission this year.
We're very excited to have you.
Congratulations.
Yay.
Hi, Lindsey Brillan. It's a pleasure to be appointed to the board. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, Katie Cost. I'm looking forward to serving the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Hi, Vicki Freezing Lampren. I'm really excited to be appointed to this board, so thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. It was a great group of applicants, so we are very, very happy about this. Thank you all. That moves us on to the managers' report.
Yes, thank you. I have one action item tonight. It is a road closure for the United Counseling Service Superhero 5K, which is scheduled for Saturday, November 4th. If you think you're cold today, just hang on. UCS is requesting permission to close Main Street from Benmont Avenue to Branch, and Gage Street from Bradford to Safford on November 4th from 8:30 a.m., or 8:00 a.m., I'm sorry, to 10:30 a.m. that morning. It is really just to allow the race to proceed along its designated route. UCS has worked with the Y, its own staff, and the Bennington Police Department to make sure that this race will run efficiently without too much disruption to the residents and traffic, and I'm looking for a motion to approve that.
Someone like to make that motion?
So move.
Thank you. Someone, are you seconding it, Ed?
I have a question that I'm holding until we have a second on the table.
Oh, okay. A second? Well, you can make it, you can second.
Let me make the second.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you. Stu, is this an annual event? I'm not familiar with it.
Yes, it is. It is an annual event.
Great. Thank you.
Any other?
I have a question. Have we, have we done this in the past, closed Main Street for such a long section?
We've, we've actually closed Main Street for MayFest, for Harvest Fest. The closure here will be similar to that. We will be detouring people around the community, especially truck traffic, for that two-and-a-half-hour period. It will be shorter, if at all possible. But yes, we have done this in the past.
Any other questions? Seeing none? All those in favor of the road closure?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Nope? Okay. Great. Thank you.
And just a couple of quick notes. Since Vicki has raised the question, this evening, I have already emailed our Assistant Director of Facilities to see if we can moderate the temperature in this building. During meetings, I come dressed for it, but nonetheless, I've watched everybody else run out and grab jackets and stuff, so I think we need to look at that. The second thing goes to the Riverwalk. Sam raised a question at the beginning about curbing by Bennington Station. That is all part of the grant to connect the improved Riverwalk to the rail trail, which begins on River Street. So, we are working with MSK engineers who own the building adjacent to this area so that we will have a nice connection as part of that whole project. It is all grant-funded. There's no taxpayer money going to this. And then, the last thing, I indicated in my report that the Willow Park Playground equipment should be in place and open, and I'm happy to say that it is.
Okay.
It was open and in full use by September 8th, which was last Friday, and we're very pleased with, with the change. The last piece is that I will be coming to you in the next meeting, looking for a change in the way we operate our brush pile at the transfer station. We currently only charge commercial haulers who bring in brush, and we're charging them at a rate of 120 a ton. So, it means they come across the scale house, dump their material, come all the way back around, get back in line, and go across the scales again. This has created some, some traffic delays, especially on Saturday mornings, where the traffic actually backs up out onto Hope and Lane. It has also created some irate and angry customers, not only for those who have to wait in line, but also for the commercial haulers who may sometimes try to get by without actually saying they're actually doing commercial work. They are actually not arguing with the scale house operator. They are actually not arguing with the scale house operator actually about whether or not their material is commercial or whether it's from their own home. So I will be back to you proposing that we charge a brush fee for all customers, residential and commercial. We'll look to potentially cut the commercial hauler fee slightly. They're currently averaging $50 to $60 a load. I'm looking at $30 a load. We won't have to then weigh them. We'll just be able to get them through. And we're looking at potentially $10 a load for residential customers. None of that is cast in stone, but I wanted to bring it to your attention and to the attention of the folks at home, that it's something we have to look at. We're currently spending in the range of $10,000 to $15,000 a year to manage that waste pile. We're only generating about $7,800 in income. So the taxpayers are subsidizing the operation to some extent, even those who do not use the waste pile. So we're looking to have it user pay and yes, those of us who use it will be asked to pay as well, those of us who are residential customers. But that is for next time, but I wanted to give you the heads up and the community gets the heads up as well.
Can you just say what a load is?
A load would be any pickup-sized truck or vehicle load that you bring in that is all brush. We're not counting leaves or any other materials, grass clippings or any of that. But if you bring in a load of brush in your vehicle, however you get it there, and I wouldn't expect that people would be loading up their cars with brush, but nonetheless, usually these tend to be pickup loads of material and that's what we're looking at. And that's all I have.
Yeah. Stu, we were told this past Saturday, this is good news, that on Saturdays, if all you have is recycling and leaves and still brush until this would go into effect, you don't have to wait in line. You can scoot around and go through.
I'm glad to hear that that's happening.
Yeah.
We've discussed that with Casella about being a little bit more flexible and getting people through the line there. We're also talking with Casella about perhaps adding a second scale so that we'd have a scale on the way out, a scale on the way in, so that those commercial haulers that must be weighed and those residential customers who ask to be weighed will not tie up the traffic as you enter the scale house.
Well, we take our brush very seriously, apparently, because I'm thinking if I have one branch, that's going to cost me $10?
No, one branch. I would hope you wouldn't be trucking one branch to the transfer station.
My car only would fit one branch.
He said a load, however you get it there. A load. However you get it there.
It's a load. I can't tell you how the scale house operators and folks at Casella would treat that one branch, but I would suggest that you look for a neighbor who has additional materials going in.
All I'm going to say is this is clearly extremely important. All right. All right.
It's hard to take you seriously sometimes, but thank you.
I'm telling you. Okay. Upcoming agendas. All right. So, oh, I didn't get to ask Megan. So we know that we have an update from Turning Point on how outreach to motels and unhoused individuals is going. And so she, I don't know if Margay's coming by herself or if she's bringing someone else with her, but we will get an update on outreach. We had hoped to have the health dashboard next meeting, so I'll check in with Megan and see if she can still do that. And then we have the energy committee representative is going to come and ask us to not charge for compost, which we apparently voted on to charge by the gallon. No kidding. It's on the Casella list and so it makes, yeah. So, yeah. So we'll do that. Anything else we know is coming up?
I don't have anything else that is on my schedule.
Okay. All right. Other business then. Gary?
I got an email right before I came that the B-PAC has been renamed to Bennington Theater and they're revamping all this exciting stuff supposed to be happening, so I just wanted to wish them well.
Nothing for me.
Okay. All right. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's go.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank everybody for coming tonight.